And good evening and welcome to the December 11th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are at home that are watching on live TV. At this time, I'm going to ask you if you will to please stand. We have two students, Deja Raymond, a sixth grade student at Reeves Rogers, along with Alejandro Castro, a sixth grade student at Overall Creek, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. All right, board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda. I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, communications.
Good evening. We'd like to start our communications with congratulating Leah Bartsch. She has been selected to be a part of the State STEM Leadership Council. The statewide council consists of 12 members, eight of which are selected through an application process. The Leadership Council will help implement and support the state's STEM initiatives, and as you may know, Leah Bartsch is one of our gifted professionals. So, also congratulations to the following schools for receiving recognition from the Tennessee Department of Education and Tennessee Behavior Support Project for their work with response to instruction and intervention for behavior. Our model of demonstration schools from a gold level are Bradley Academy and Overall Creek, silver level, Scales, Northfield, and Casey Lane. The bronze level is Discovery School and Reeves Rogers, and then the school of recognition is John Pittard Elementary. The purpose of this identification is to promote model schools to share their practices and examples, and to celebrate each school's effort and dedication to meeting the needs of all students. So, congratulations to all of those schools. We'd also like to congratulate the 2018 Fall BEP Nissan Mini Grant winners, Dr. Lori Housley with Cup of Conversation from Bradley Academy, Elizabeth Shepherd, Letting Coding Take Root, Discovery School, Debbie Hickerson, If You Build It, They Will Come, and The Art of Science, from John Pittard, Anita Morton, Educational Breakout, Mitchell Nielsen School, Felicia Jackson, I'm in the Mood for Rube, from Overall Creek Elementary, and Karen Tyson, Mary Mary Quite Contrary, How Do You Say Your Garden Grows?, the Discovery School. Also, congratulations to Casey Lane student, Jana Parks. She won first place in the sixth grade Language Arts for the Junior Division during the Tennessee State Beta Club Convention last month. Congratulations to Murfreesboro City School teams who competed in the 2018 First LEGO League Qualifying Tournament on Saturday, December 8th. Discovery Schools' two robotics teams, coached by Wendy Heckert, Jennifer Smith, and Shay Payne, received second place in project design and second place in robot design. Irma Siegel's team, coached by Angela Pope and Buffy Davenport, received second place in core values. Northfield's team, coached by Mary Orket, Caitlin Traumel and Heather Knox, received first place in core values. Casey Lane's team, coached by Jessica Peaty and Julie Seymour, also competed successfully in the event. Siegel, Northfield, and Discovery will be competing in the league championship in Cookville. Continuing, congratulations to Scales Boys Superstars Basketball Team for their first-place title in the MCS Basketball Championship, and to Black Fox Boys for being the runner-up. Both teams played a tremendous game last week. We also want to congratulate Reeves Rogers Girls for their first-place win, and Bradley Girls for being the runner-up. And again, this is for the championship for MCS Basketball. The season was a huge success. We want to thank our principals. We want to also thank Mr. Ringstaff for coordinating this, and for the Murfreesboro Police Department who were at every game. Also want to say a huge shout-out to all of the parents and students who participated in these games. They're just wonderful to watch. Speaking of basketball, we'll go on to cheer. Congratulations to MCS Competition Cheer Team. Both the MCS Junior Team and the MCS Youth Team have qualified for the National Championship Competition at Disney later on this year. We appreciate the commitment of the students, their parents, and the coaches, Amber Kelly, Megan Brewer, Taylor Sams, and Jessica Jacobs. As you know, this is the first year we've actually had a youth team, so for both the junior and the youth to be going on to the Nationals is a pretty good statement of how great these girls are. If you were at the MTSU ballgame, you got to get a sample of their cheering. MCS is also blessed to have tremendous bus drivers and assistants. Every day, they ensure our children's travel safely to and from school, and tonight, I want to send a special shout-out to last year's Bus Driver of the Year, and she's been before you before, Teresa Crouch, for the way she demonstrates her heart for children. If you receive the DNJ, you will know that there was a letter to the editor this past Sunday about Teresa and the extra mile that she goes each day. So, that was a really nice tribute to her. I want to finish by just congratulating Murfreesboro City Schools' coordinated school health and the nutrition department. Today, they received the Bright Spot Award from the Tennessee Department of Health for their Junior Chef Program in coordination with Rutherford County Health Department. That is your communication.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. I'd like to remind board members, too, of our meeting with, our joint meeting with the Rutherford County School Board. I believe that is December the 19th with our state legislators. I know that our city council members have been invited, as well as many of the county commissioners. So, mark that on your calendar if you can attend. I think you will enjoy seeing what goes on, particularly those of you that are new. All right, consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items, tenured teachers. Mr. Ringstaff?
Good evening. It is my privilege each year to read out the names of these employees who are eligible for tenure. These employees have completed five years with Murfreesboro City Schools. The fourth and fifth year, they must get what we call a four or five Level of Effectiveness, LOE. Four is above expectation, and five is significantly above expectations for the last two years. So, I would like to read these names, and if they're here, I would like for them to stand up, to be recognized, and please remain standing until we complete all the names on the list. Amy Swanson from Black Fox, Anita Morton from Mitchell Nielsen, Tony Hartman from Scales, Ben Bjork, he's at three or four different schools, Brandon Cheedle from Siegel, Brendan King from Mitchell Nielsen, Brittany Kreisky, she emailed me and said she was not going to be able to make it. She's at Scales. Caleb Jones, I saw him at Pittard. Diana Willis from Overall Creek, DeeDee Potter from Hobgood, Damicia Lesnick, Scales, Nikki Watts from Bradley, Izzy Pozo from Scales, Jamar DeBerry from Bradley, Jennifer Capps from Mitchell Nielsen, Jessica Cottisbadi from Black Fox, Jessica Jacobs from Scales, Joe Marlin from Central Office.
It's about time.
Karen Mayfield from Northfield, Casey Jones from Pittard, Kelly Dillard from Pittard, Kenny Hoat from Overall Creek, Kimberly Conrad from Black Fox, Laura Kayler from Casey Lane, Leah Bartsch from Central Office, Molly Oliver from Pittard, Mary McKintzky, sorry, I know that butchered that one, Pittard, Megan Brewer from Scales, Melanie Brogley from Siegel, Morgan Jones from Siegel, Patty McCloy from Hobgood, Stanley Grimes from Pittard, Stephanie Portilus from Scales, Summer Cerber from Pittard, Tara Clary from Overall Creek. These 35 employees are eligible for tenure, and I would like to make a recommendation that you pass a motion to approve these individuals for tenure.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second. Have a second to that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And a round of applause for all of us.
Teachers, you may stay or you may leave. It's up to you.
Oh, don't leave. Let's stick around a while. I know, you've got to go home and work on lists and plans.
That's exactly right.
We thank you very much. We are always glad to have tenured teachers in our presence. We're glad to have any educators in our presence.
Yes.
Because it is a tough job, let me tell you. It's not getting any easier. All right, our next item on our action items, naming of a new school.
Okay, once again, the school naming committee, consisting of nine members, seven of which were present for the meeting, the other two had conflicts, met in November and voted on names to be presented to the board. In total, we had 324 people submit approximately 500 names to the committee. Following Board Policy, BO47, the school naming committee respectfully submits the following names to the board for consideration for the newest Murfreesboro City School. All names have, all schools have the ending name elementary, so I'm going to read them to you two ways, once without that elementary and then once with it. So, the four names are Salem, Veterans Parkway, New Salem, John Hodge Jones, or Salem Elementary, Veterans Parkway Elementary, New Salem Elementary, and John Hodge Jones Elementary. And those are the four names that are being presented to the board by the school naming committee.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. All right, board members, any, is there a motion for any one of the four names, or would you like to have some discussion? Mr. Ballard?
I would make a motion for Veterans Parkway Elementary.
All right. We have a second to that motion.
I'll second it for the discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now, open for discussion. Ms. Barton?
I realize that Veterans Parkway is close by, and that's why it was a consideration. I just know that our tendency has always been to shorten it to something. You know, Irma Siegel is Siegel. I mean, think about all the ones. Okay, if we shorten it to Veterans School, I think there, I don't know, I think there could be a little misunderstanding there. I mean, Veterans School, Parkway School, where the others, I think, lend themselves better to a shorter name. That's a silly reason, but it's going to happen.
Okay. Ms. Settle?
I'm going to agree with Roseanne, because I see it going that way, to be shortened to Veterans, or maybe Veterans Parkway. So, that's my discussion on Veterans Parkway Elementary.
Ms. Moore?
I have a couple of concerns about it. One is, the school is not actually visible, I don't think, from Veterans Parkway. There's a tract of land between, if I'm not mistaken, so that could be confusing as well. And the second one is much more minor, but you just have to forgive me. Words that end in an S are very tricky for people. You'll have all sorts of apostrophes coming in and out of there when you're trying to spell Veterans Parkway Elementary. And it's, it's a minor point, but I think it would actually end up, I think it's a legitimate thing.
Very good point.
Okay. You know, Mr. LaRoche?
My, my comment about veterans, you know, with all due respect to our, to our veterans, it's not something that's unique to our community. I'm worried that if we went with veterans, we'd miss an opportunity to name the school after a geographic area that is unique to this community, and that would be Salem or New Salem. And so, that would be my preference, because I think we are the Murfreesboro City School Board. We are setting up schools for our local residents. I think recognizing the historical significance of the community is of great concern to ours.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Let us have a roll call vote, please, on Veterans Parkway Elementary. Either vote yes or no.
Mr. Ballard?
I'm going to yield to my colleagues and say no to my own nomination.
Ms. Moore? No.
Ms. Dahl?
No.
Mr. LaRoche?
No.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Mr. Settle?
No. I was going to say yes.
No.
And Ms. Settle?
Okay. All right. Now, Ms. Settle?
I just want some information on the last name, John Hodge Jones. I don't know.
Dr. Jones was, at one time, was the, he taught, I think, in Murfreesboro City, I know Rutherford County. He was the superintendent of schools for a while here. At one time, was with the State Department of Education, I believe, and I don't know other backgrounds.
He started the ESP program. I mean, there were several things that were, that he initiated.
Right. He opened up Casey Lane, which was the first media, first year-round school, preceded Maryland Mathas as superintendent, and went on to be a member of the Rutherford County School Board, actually, after he left the super diplomacy.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have another recommendation for the naming of our new school?
You're, Mr. Chairman, I would like to put a motion forward to name the school New Salem Elementary.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it again.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand what you were saying. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second for naming of New Salem Elementary. Any discussion? Ms. Moore?
I'm just curious about, if we could have some discussion about the difference between naming the school New Salem versus Salem. I tend to go for the more, the simpler one, because New Salem, I don't know that it's a real place in Rutherford County. I could, could be wrong about that, but during the committee meeting, we had a resident whose family is from that area and talked to us a lot, and told us about the history of this area being Salem. I think New Salem may be a road. I could be mistaken about that. So, so just put that out there about the distinction between New Salem and Salem for our school name.
Okay. Ms. Settle?
I'm going to say New Salem has a better ring to it, to me. I know that sounds kind of small, but New Salem sounds, everybody knows New, well, I shouldn't say everybody. New Salem Highway is very popular, and I think it's going to be expanding pretty soon. The Salem community, yes, is there, but I think New Salem is kind of an area now. So, I'm kind of in favor of the New Salem.
Okay. Ms. Moore?
Another comment. It's similar to the Veterans Parkway. The school isn't on New Salem Highway, which I think could also lead to some confusion.
But it's in that area, in the community.
It's in the area, sure.
It's in the community.
I think if I remember correctly, and I will go back to what Amanda said, in the committee meeting, the discussion between New Salem and Salem, there really is not a New Salem. There was a Salem community, and, which is part of that area, and that was one reason that some liked the Salem more than the New Salem. But, Ms. Barton?
You know, I did not know that. I, I guess I thought New Salem was also an area. I do like the historical aspect of Salem. I think it's always neat when we can pull that kind of thing into a school's name for the children that go there. So, I, I can see that definitely.
Okay. Ms. Dahl?
Well, I think it's important that we have Salem as part of the new school's name, because that's representative of the community. I tend to agree with Amanda about adding two words to the title. So, that's what I think about it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
She mentioned, or I shouldn't say she, Amanda mentioned earlier when she was saying how we shorten names. Do you think if it's called New Salem, that it'll get shortened to Salem anyway?
I bet it would.
I think it would. I just think it would. I think would, I think when we refer to it, nobody, well, I shouldn't say nobody, I'm going to stop doing stuff. We very rarely, we don't often just say Irma Siegel. We say it sometimes, sometimes we don't, but it's more rapidly known as Siegel. Scales is known as Scales Elementary, although that's not, you know, the whole name of the person it's named after. So, and again, I'm just, probably because it rings better to me, New Salem, and when I think of just Salem, I'm, you know, my mind goes to Massachusetts. But I know it's our community.
All right. Do we have any other discussion? The motion is for New Salem Elementary. Any other discussion?
Any, to amend it, you would have to amend it, right? David would have to amend his motion.
Yes. He could amend his motion.
Well, if this, if this motion doesn't pass, I would imagine that there could be another motion for just Salem Elementary.
Possibly.
Yeah, possibly.
I was just trying to save a little time, but okay.
All right, roll call vote, please. This is voting either yes or no for New Salem Elementary.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Ms. Dahl?
No.
Mr. LaRoche?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Mr. Settle?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
No.
Five no's and two yeses.
All right. Now, do we have another motion for the naming of the new school?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Settle?
I offer a motion that we name the new school Salem Elementary. See how that goes.
All right. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Now, any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. LaRoche?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Settle?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right. Thank you. So, the new school will be known as Salem Elementary School. S-E-S.
Yes.
And then we'll determine mascot, and...
What's mascot going to be?
Well, that's up to...
Well, hopefully, the principal will get to decide.
I would say that's probably true.
I got to decide. I think Mr. Bartsch got to decide, so.
All right, next on the agenda, consideration of the 2019-2020 Transportation Zones for New Southwest School. Now, before we start on this, let me say, and I think I'm speaking for the board, we certainly do appreciate very much the emails, the telephone calls, the comments that we have received from many people involved, particularly parents involved in this situation. I can tell you that it has not been an easy, it's not an easy decision to make. I think we all, the board have all thought about it, and perhaps might have even had a prayer or two about it, because I think it is certainly something that affects a lot of parents and students. We realize that whatever decision we make, everybody is not going to be happy. That's, we can't help that. And I'm sorry that we can't make everybody happy, but I don't think that will be. But, we do hope that after our discussion and consideration, and when we decide on the transportation zones, that everybody will jump on board and agree, and let us have a wonderful opening in 2020. Now, we did recommend, say to you a few minutes ago, that if anyone would like to speak to the board pertaining to this item, we asked you to sign up on the signing sheet. Do we have anyone who signed the sheet? No, we do not. Okay. All right. So, at this point in time, I'm going to open for discussion on the zoning, the transportation zones for the new, I'm sorry, for the Salem Elementary School. Any comments from board members or discussion? We want to hear anything from Mr. Anderson. He is here and can answer our questions. Ms. Barton?
I'm not sure if we're ready to make it in a form of a motion or not yet, but I still have a lot of misgivings about, about moving some of the children out of the zone. I fully understand, I talked to Mr. Bartsch, I fully understand being overcrowded, and that we, that children have to leave that school. I get that. I just think that a couple of the sections that we've talked about, particularly the children that will not go to school with their middle school peers, you know, the last part of, almost half of their elementary school, that to me is, that is a huge transition problem for those children. I'm not sure what the solution is. I'm just not ready to say that that's the way it should be.
Okay. Mr. LaRoche?
One of my issues with this is I feel like, I feel like we've been presented as a board sort of one option, and I don't, and as many questions as we can ask about them, all the, all the answers kind of come back to, well, this is, you know, the best thing. And I know Mr. Anderson and the staff has done a lot of work and a lot of brand juice, and there's no way to make this happy, to make this perfect for everybody. But, as a deliberative matter, it's difficult for me to feel like I'm making a good decision when, when there hasn't been sort of Plan B, Plan C for us to review. A lot of legitimate questions have been raised about the waivers for county students, and if there's a way that we can address the grandfathering issue and address overcrowding, and perhaps look at those vouchers, I would like to know about it. And I don't think that's going to be able to be presented at today's meeting. And so, I, as a board member, would request some more time, and perhaps a directive to the staff to give a couple of alternatives based on their, their best, their best work that they can do for doing a definite rezoning plan.
Would you like for Mr. Anderson to answer your question pertaining to out-of-city students? I think he can.
I would, if he's, if he's able to. I don't want to put him on the spot.
Can you do that tonight, Ms. Anderson?
Sure.
I know it won't take long.
Yes, the, we do accept out-of-city students into our schools during the first two years of a new school opening. Yes, the, uh, we do accept out-of-city students into our schools, uh, during the, the first two years of a new school opening. And then we close down the zone on those schools. We did it at Scales, we did it at Pittard, and we've done it at Overall Creek. We closed after two years. What happened was Overall Creek ended up with, I think it was 260 students who came in originally, which helps us develop our programs so that we have art teachers, music teachers, et cetera, so that they get a full, a full day of being able to teach all the classes. But every year that number drops. Right now, the number of out-of-zone students at Overall Creek are, is 151. It was over 200 last year, dropped over 50 students in one year. The further you get away from the closed zone, it drops. For example, I'll give you Scales Elementary has 20. Uh, John Pittard has nine. It just keeps dropping as we go, uh, get further away from it. Total out-of-city enrollment in the district is 382. When people fill out an application for out-of, out-of-city or even out-of-zone, because we have two different applications. Out-of, out-of-city means they live in the county, and, and it's just, um, a, a request to have a different zone uh, within the city is two different things. But on both of those, there's a, there's a, a line that says, based on overcrowding, et cetera, we can, we can take back that, that form and say, you have to go to your zone school. That has always been in place since I've been doing this 11 years. We've never had to use that piece because, as I said, the number keeps dropping. Uh, this is the first time it's ever been called into question in 11 years.
But, so, my understanding is Overall has about 80 students too many. And you just said there were 160 or 150 something. Yes, county's own students that are in there. Hypothetically, if we were able to grant a grandfather waiver for all existing students at Overall except for those waiver students, but otherwise go with the zoning plan, would the math work for that? Would we clean out enough students to, to address the overcrowning at Overall and still be able to bring enough neighborhoods in to fill the new school?
Uh, all you're doing is delaying it maybe one year. For example, we dropped 50 county students. We grew last year 70. So, net was 120 student growth in the school in one year, within the city limits. It'll last maybe one year if you were to do that. There's other implications if you go that route. Um, but I just ran some quick numbers. In the last two years, the city has, has permits issued for 5,096 new housing units. 5,096. Majority of them are on the west side of town. Overall Creek, Scales, and Case and Lane are over or at capacity right now. That's why we have the new school zone developed there. The, the number of out-of-county or out-of-city students has dropped over the years. It used to be over 500. And now we're down, uh, to 382 total. So, it has dropped. It hasn't been as much a concern to us, because like I said, we've never had it. Our growth in the last four years, we have grown 1,412 students, even with the county number dropping. And this year already, we've grown 104. No matter what you do on these things, you're delaying it maybe one year, and that's it.
Delaying them being overcrowded again for one year, you mean?
Yes.
Um, can I ask?
Ms. Goff?
Okay, so I'm wondering about, do we, are you saying that we've got like two options with the out-of-city waivers? That we would send them, uh, basically back to their zone, or we, and deny their waiver? Or we, or the second option, they would be zoned to the new school?
They can still go to the new school, because when we open the school, it's gonna be open zone to anybody who wants to go there. And some of the students may actually leave Overall Creek to go there, because they may live closer. But we always open up a new school, like I said, with two. Part of the reason, part of the mentality of that is you have special areas, and they can teach 35 classes a week. So, you're looking to get as close to that number as you can to get a, to get a person dedicated the whole day to working in those areas, like art, music, et cetera. So, we always wanna prime the pump, so to speak, to get them in, and then it starts to trickle down. And that's how we, that's how we go about it. How we go about designing the zone lines is transportation. And we do it based on ease of transportation, for our buses to go through the different areas. Our school's start times are critical to match up with the county as best we can. One of the questions that came about the, uh, the concern about the county middle school thing, honestly, that never entered my decision process on doing this, because I have any control over that. Only the things I control that I, that we can control that I did.
The county middle school, you mean what I was talking about?
I think you said where they were gonna be going from one school out, out of there, and then going back to a middle school with other kids.
With the children that were staying at Overall.
Yeah.
Mr. Ballard?
So, at the end, we've got the county waivers that are attending this, the Overall Creek. At the end of the day, there, none of the county school waivers are moving. So, in effect, we, have I got it right, that we'll be moving students, city resident students from Overall Creek to Scales or Overall Creek to Salem? At the expense of the county waivers?
We're gonna have to shrink that zone down, no matter what you do with the county numbers. Because of the growth across the street from Overall Creek is 600 apartments. Up on Veterans Parkway and, oh, and 840. There is there now 267 single-family homes under construction and 302 apartments. That's 1,100 units. That zone's gonna shrink again, folks. It's gonna get tighter and tighter.
And I understand that. I, I, I'm not arguing with that at all, Gary. I just think, I think for, um...
It's flawed if we're moving county residents, uh, moving city students, because we've got county students taking their seats.
That's what, yeah, I hate to say it. I had a lot of good county families. I, I'm, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying our responsibility is to the city citizens, the people that live within city limits.
And I, I wanted to know, are the, the out-of-city students, where are they coming from? Are they Walter Hill? Where, are they all over?
All over the city they come in. It's not just any one area that they come into any one of our schools, because they come to every one of our schools.
And how would that affect us financially if they are not attending city schools?
If they choose not to come to city schools, all of them, or just, you're saying just the ones at Overall Creek?
At Overall Creek.
And you're saying that they couldn't go to any of our other schools?
Well, I guess if they go to any of our other schools, we're still gonna have their monies coming in, so, that's not...
If they went back to county?
County.
They go back to county, each, each student, the state funds follow the student. It's about $5,000 per student that we get. So, you got, you're gonna say 150 leave, that's $750,000 that you would lose. Which then means you lose that many, you're gonna lose seven teachers.
But you just said with all the building in that area, those, that number's gonna be replaced pretty quickly.
It will come back. It'll come back in a couple of years.
Yeah, that bucket.
Or less.
It'll start next year and come back the following year.
So, we do have the option to, um, allow these students that have waiver, city waivers, to go back to county? Is that an option that we have legally, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
You've always had that option since, since the last 11 years that I've been doing this.
And if we were able to do that, the net effect on students that would have to be rezoned that are in our city, would that, and this is, this is the only thing that really is gonna matter, would that lessen those that would have to uproot? Would that bring that number down? If we, I don't know what the term is for getting rid of those waivers. I don't know the correct term. But if we snatch those waivers back and said, okay, go back to your, your county, or we don't have those seats available anymore, uh, would that bring our number down of disruption as far as rezoning?
Depends on what you do with the other, other changes in the zoning. In other words, if you, if you decide that you wanna let the ones that are showing on the map now stay at Overall Creek, uh, the total there is about 90 to 100, you're still gonna be 100, 1,022 students. If you take all the 150 out, and you let the other ones grandfather, you're still already over capacity.
Does that include any growth? Did, did you assume growth next year?
These numbers are based on today's numbers. It does not consider any growth for next year. And like I said, Overall Creek grew 120 kids last year, based on the drop in, in, of the county students and the increase, regular increase of the other students.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes?
So, a couple of questions. Just wanna make sure I just understood what you said. So, did I just hear right that even if all the county students did not return to Overall Creek, were you saying we would still be overcrowded in Overall next year?
Depending on what you do with allowing the other students to grandfather or not.
I'm saying, say we don't change the Overall Creek zones, we keep those students, but the only change would be not renewing the county waivers. Would that solve the overcrowding problem for Overall Creek, for next year? I'm not...
Leave everything at Overall Creek the way it is now, except the county?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'll look at the numbers, but it's basically, it's gonna be about a, about a break even on 1,000. So, you know, it's, and then that doesn't count any new growth that comes in to those 1,100 units.
So, I have a, a second question to kind of separate out the, the zone from the waiver issue. So, if we were to approve the proposed zone plan, from my understanding, there are two different types of waivers. We have the, the out-of-city waivers, that's what the county kids are using, and then the out-of-zone waivers, which are what city residents who don't live in the zone for the school apply to. So, if we were to approve this zone, but when waivers come in, prioritize applications for the out-of-zone city residents looking for a waiver to remain at Overall Creek versus the out-of-city waivers from the county students wanting to remain at Overall Creek. The long-term effect then is that this is our new zone, so we're planning for this growth. We know it's gonna grow. But then we've, we have not uprooted the kids who are at Overall Creek. We've not basically booted the city kids, um, for the county kids when we're looking at, at waivers.
Well, there's only 18 students within the city limits that, that are at Overall Creek, Overall Creek by choice. And they're probably teachers' kids or employees' kids that go there.
Right. So, what I'm saying is, we approve this, which means that Blackman Farm is out of Overall Creek, which means that Merrimott Springs is out of Overall Creek. But if those parents decide they are willing to provide the transportation themselves, and they apply for a waiver, an out-of-zone waiver, why could we not prioritize those waiver applications over the out-of-city waiver applications from the county residents?
You could, but the proposal was the school be closed zone next year, so you'd be totally changing that and saying that we're gonna open zone the school, uh, for in-city residents. And I would not recommend you opening that zone for in-city residents.
But the county kids who are there on a waiver, they have to apply every year, right? They have to reapply for a waiver?
They do.
So, even though it's closed zone next year, we're still gonna be getting waiver applications from the families that are in the county applying to go there?
Not new ones. They'll be...
Not new ones. No, not new ones. I'm talking about existing students at Overall Creek. I'm kinda trying to, to stay there.
Students, yes, ones that are already there. Right.
I, I personally would propose, and I'll make a motion this time, I would like to see us have a work session of sorts that we publicize in time to be within the law, within the sunshine law, where this is all we talk about. And, and we, we are able to bounce ideas around and, and talk to you about what, what could happen, what couldn't happen. I, I just, I'm not, I'm not ready to vote yet. I make that motion.
Second.
Have a second for, for Mr. Sattles. As to any other discussion? Would you like to have this, uh, at meeting the second Tuesday in January and do it that night and not do policies?
That's fine.
Or do we have a very limited number of policies that we need to work on, on that meeting?
We could do that. There was, there was, right. We, we had some prepared for tonight, and we pulled because we realized that this discussion would take time. So, we can, we can give you some policies. It would be delete because something's been replaced, or something that's not gonna probably, it's gonna be pretty much state law.
So, we could do that in that meeting in January. Okay? All right. So, the motion then, and the second, is that we defers any zoning decision, transportation zones, tonight. We will have the work session, which will be the second Tuesday of January. At that meeting, we will look at a few policies. But then after we finish with those policies, we will do nothing but discuss transportation zones, and we can talk and, and try to get a clear understanding. Hopefully then, by the time we have our second meeting in January, we can vote on and approve a zoning plan for Salem Elementary School. Any other discussion on that motion? Mr. Ballard?
Maybe not for that motion, but I just wanna support Mr. LaRoche. I think the idea of having, uh, administration present to us Plan A, Plan B, and maybe Plan C is really the quickest way to get down to it, and so that we, we're not trying to create the Plan B. And you can suggest to us that if we want to do that A, this is how we do it. If we wanna do B, this is what's gonna be the collateral issues, and C, the collateral issues. You understand what I'm saying.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. All right, reports and information?
The reports and information, the first report, I, I will be presenting you with a full calendar in January. But I do wanna have time to talk with principals and teachers about it. Um, there are some things I think we'll keep in place for sure, like the parent-teacher conference days and the full days for planning. But tonight, I wanted to let you know that right now, and I have discussed this enough with principals to know um, that this is the way we'll go. But the fall break will be matching the county, which will be Monday, October the 7th through February, uh, through February. That's a really long... Oh, principals, put your hands down.
Awesome, Paul.
Jeez. All right. Monday, October the 7th through Friday, October the 11th. Thanksgiving break will be Wednesday, November 27th through Friday, the 29th. That also matches the county. Winter break will be Friday, December the 20th, and it will run through January the 6th. The county has a two-hour day on, um, on, well, actually, yeah, the county has a two-hour day on that Friday. We will not be doing that. So, our last day will be that Thursday. So, we, our last day will be Thursday, the, the 19th, and run through Monday, uh, January the 6th, with that being a service day. And then spring break will make the county calendar, which is Monday, March the 30th through Friday, April the 3rd. So, really, the only difference in the two calendars as far as breaks will, we, will be that we will take that Thursday of the 19th of December as our last day instead of the two hours on Friday.
Okay. Ms. Sattles?
I have a question, and it's, it's somewhat dealing with the calendar, but not necessarily. And we may have discussed this before, and I was asleep. The question was presented to me, how is it that schools end up being polling places? Do we have an agreement with the city? I don't know if any, has that ever been brought up?
Well...
Should we? I just wondered.
Bring it up again.
Uh, Mr. Campbell and I actually, I believe it was Mr. Campbell, or it could have been, um, um, Phil. But we actually went to talk with the county about that. Our preference, my preference, would be that they are not polling places. At the time, there were, it needs, within certain zones, they needed a place to have as a polling place, and that's the reason the schools were there. But we certainly, I would certainly be very happy to revisit that again because, um, it, it creates issues.
So, that's a discussion that we have with the county commission?
With the election.
Election commission.
Election commission. Mr. Farley.
Okay.
And we did get in that discussion this last year quite a bit, didn't we?
So, we're just, and I guess, and I don't wanna beat this horse, but I will just a little. We're constrained. Am I getting it right?
What happens with us is we've been able to use those as professional development days. What we have to be careful is to ma, is to make sure that ESP is not in those places. We do have less schools used as polling places than what we previously had, but we still have a few. And I'd be happy to revisit that, um, with Mr. Campbell, perhaps with, with Mr. Farley.
Yeah, and we need to do that...
I think it's worth a discussion.
I do too.
But there, there was, of course, you may remember, but... Well, in advance, but there, there was, of course, you may remember, but there was a time when schools were in session...
Yes.
Full school day when we, when they were polling places.
Which was horrible.
I remember.
Well, I was there.
Yeah, because I was at, my polling place was at Reeves-Rodgers.
It's a safety nightmare.
Well...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of you had large gyms, you could, they came right, when I was principal, they came right in the front door in the lobby, and that's where they voted, because they had to come through the front door to get to the gym, so, but anyway, that's water over the dam today. All right, Mr. Ballard?
Did I understand it, that Mr. Farley is the, the decision-maker on that?
That, that's who we would go to, to talk, to talk to about it.
Okay, I mean, the power lies with him to make that decision.
I think, and I think it's within the constraints that he is under too, so I think that, that we would have a pretty, we had a collegiate discussion before, and I, I think we could assume that again, but I think it's worth our going and discussing it.
All right, next item, revision of city ordinance.
This is the city ordinance that has to do with the hours that city parks, parking lots, and school grounds are to be closed to the public. And so the new ordinance is changing the hours in the morning from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., which means that basically no person would be allowed on the grounds of a city school between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. unless authorized by the director of the school or designee. We, one change that I was glad to see is that they did move it back because, of course, ESP is there and also custodial. I don't foresee this as a problem, I see it as a very positive step. So the, the key to me was to have that exception in there so that if we need, did need to have folks on the grounds, and I can see that when alarms go off and other things, there are reasons for people to be on the grounds, so I'm very comfortable with that. So that's a point of information for you.
And that's an ordinance, we have, we have no say so on that.
The council will vote on that, right.
All right.
The council will vote on that. Okay, your next is the enrollment report, and that's Mr. Anderson.
Yes, our enrollment, as I mentioned earlier, is up 104 over last year at the end of the year. Our pupil teacher ratio in K through 3 is still under 20, and we're at 21, a little over 21 for 4 through 6, and our overall is 20.12. Our attendance went to 95% this time, from 96 to 95, which is still an excellent number. We are experiencing the growth, as you know.
All right, any questions about the enrollment report? All right. Is there any other business to go before this board tonight? Yes, Ms. Goff?
I wanted to give a big thank you to Gary Anderson for all of the work you put into devising this school rezoning map, because I wouldn't want to have to do it, and I'm glad that you did.
I'd like to...
And did such a great job, and also to our parents that represented all of the neighborhoods. I don't think anybody on the board wants to, anything different than having a neighborhood school and letting our children that's in each neighborhood attend a school that's in their neighborhood. And you all have conducted yourself very respectfully to the board in all of the meetings and the personal contacts, and I want to thank each of you that's representing your community here tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, both to the parents and to Gary. I know I've pestered you with emails pretty much on a daily basis, and so appreciate your patience with all of us and, and the work you've put into it.
All right, anything else?
I was, I was going to add a comment and a compliment onto Gary, but I'm not now. Because I do not want him giving Linda a hard time tomorrow at work. So Gary, thanks for, you know, thanks. I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Barton?
I just wanted to add to the basketball, what we were talking about earlier, and there were several thank yous in the basketball, but those principals that are out there, they know that it takes teachers in that school that help with those ballgames, the principals, the custodial staff, parents, kids, and I just, it, it takes a lot of effort, I think, in the long run. It's great for those kids that get to participate and for the kids that get to come, but it's still a lot of effort, and, and I just want to know how much we appreciate that because I know how hard it is, and we appreciate it.
Well said. Been there and done that, and you have too, and a lot of others have as well, but it is, it is certainly, it's a task, but it's certainly something that's well appreciated, and I think that the players appreciate it probably more so than what they say. All right, anything else coming for this board tonight? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche, for having a second.
I'll second.
I figured you would. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.